You all set, Madam?
I'd like to call this council meeting supporter. Can I get a roll call, please? Chair Khalid is absent. Counselor Braden, is he not on Zoom?
He would be excused, I believe.
Okay. Counselor Danforth, here. Counselor Mador.
Here.
Counselor McEwing.
Here.
Counselor Hellettiere.
Here.
And Counselor Prey.
Yeah.
Let me have you all stand for the presidency.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic of which it stands, one nation under our individual liberties, darkest of all.
In the absence of the chair, sorry. Nomination for Chair Protown.
I'll nominate the Council Danforth for Council Chair Protown.
Any other nominations? Hearing and seeing none, vote on Counselor Danforth for co-chair term. I guess no roll call because none find.
We have nobody online, so yeah, we can do it here.
Okay. Five oh, thank you. Welcome to the seat. You're, oh, you're gonna say you didn't raise your hand, I'm sorry.
I don't know if they're gonna.
Four zero one.
They don't support themselves, I don't know if I want to support them.
You can support yourself, Counselor Danforth.
And I'll.
Thank you. There are adjustments to the agenda. The orders number two thirty-six, twenty twenty-two, and orders two four, two forty-three, twenty twenty-two are updated. There are additions, orders two forty-four dash twenty twenty-two through two forty-eight dash twenty twenty-two. And Mr. Manager? There'll be an additional change in the order.
Um, yeah, we'd like to request to move orders two forty-five through two forty-seven to the front of the agenda immediately following manager's report, please.
Second.
Forty-eight, you wanna use the, let's move on. For now.
Two forty-five.
Oh.
Two forty-five and two.
Two, yes, two forty-eights on the second page, I didn't, I didn't have that open.
Forty-five through two forty-eight.
Yes, correct.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Does that require a vote, or can we just do it?
No.
Yeah, I didn't think so, yeah, yeah. So speaking of approval of minutes from July twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-two?
Second.
Most of me by Counselor Mador, second is by Counselor McEwing, all those in favor?
Yeah.
Vote passes five zero. Moving along to special presentations, our first presentation is by Todd Phillips from Millinocket Regional Hospital, please come up to the podium.
Counselor, thank you for having me today. This is our third autumn entering into the COVID season, and although it has been declared that the pandemic is over, I'd like to remind everyone that each of us has been touched one way or the other, either having COVID or possibly knowing someone who has. We at the hospital, Millinocket Regional Hospital, will be supporting that effort once again this year. We will be providing the Pfizer vaccine, and we have changed from Moderna to Pfizer based solely on availability. Those, both of those vaccines are interchangeable from whatever you may have had before, and this is a bivalent booster, which includes a portion of the previous and original strain with the newest and most dangerous, the BA four, BA five Omicron virus, so it's by valent. So with the generous support of the new leadership at Sterns High School, we will be returning there in Oc, in October, beginning October fourth and sixth, and then every Tuesday and Thursday for the following three weeks. So posters and flyers are at the bench there with the agenda packets, this will be on every social media that we can find. So also, please tell everyone, because it's difficult, as you all know, with our aging population that does, isn't as computer savvy, it's difficult to get this information out. The Pfizer vaccine will be available to those who are twelve years of age and above. They must be further than two months past their any previous booster and not have had COVID in the last eight weeks. And that's a lot of information. As you well know, I'm always available to the town council members as well as the community here for whatever they may even, if they have questions regarding COVID itself. So I do encourage any questions about the specific nature of this particular vaccine or what a Millinocket Regional Hospital's efforts have been. I open the floor to the council for any questions you may have.
Thank you, any counselor comment, question? Counselor Mador?
Thank you. Have you been, since the, the initial rollout of the vaccine and the times that you've had for the boosters and things, have you noticed a steady? Is it been fairly steady as far as the amount of people that are getting vaccinated? Has it been a decline? How, how has this been progressing?
Initially, when, thank you for the question, by the way, the initial desire for this vaccine when it first rolled out was, was at times overwhelming, to be honest with you. I was very proud of this, this community for stepping up the way it did to embrace the vaccine effort, to, to make every effort possible to get the vaccine. Booster clinics initially were also the same way. I have seen a decline and not just, people are just tired of it, is what it really comes down to, and that's what I hear from everyone, oh, are we gonna get another one of these in six months? The answer to that is, I'm not sure. I suspect that this will be more of a seasonal thing like the flu vaccine. But yes, we have seen a decline in those who were getting the original booster series. Most of it has been, sorry, the original vaccine series, the two-shot series, we've seen a decline. But we have seen also a slow decline through the summer months of those one thing boosters. But now as autumn approaches, people are more stuck inside, weather changes, the incidence of COVID will go up. So I'm anticipating that the, the hot, um, community will embrace this once again.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Any other counselor comments, questions? Counselor Prey?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thanks again for being here, always appreciate you keeping the public as informed as possible. I had seen something the other day that said that, I can't remember if it was eight or nine to ten people that died, or people who are over fifty. And I, I just think that it's something that us being an older community, more people need to understand the significance of, of of getting the vaccine and taking care of themselves and younger people who might have older relatives or friends to consider it, to be considerate of those older folks, especially in Northern Maine, this area, because you served Ironman, the first couple of days you did those rollouts. You had literally hundreds running out of the vaccines that you had, and people had to come back. I just think that, um, I'm hoping the public, and as you said, you're gonna put it in every form of media that you can for more and more people to understand, as you also said, it's kind of like the flu. While we've got a handle on it, we haven't eradicated it, and people need to be cautious of it and considerate of it. I appreciate everything that Millinocket Hospital has been doing on this. I just wanted to thank you and kind of put that out there for people to consider.
Thank you, sir. Um, in response to that, I, I will say that your words are actually spot on in regards to the, the community's willingness to receive this. You know, they may have said that the pandemic is over, which by definition of what a pandemic is, is correct. We have been able to be very fortunate to battle this, this, this virus down to its endemic stage. So we are still in a state of crisis, and I don't think the community sometimes embraces that because of their own personal frustrations with masks and mandates and everything else. But we are fortunate that through, through the workings of science, we'll be able to get this down to a bivalent vaccine similar to the flu shot. Flu shot is a, it's last year's, it's flu A and flu B combined. It's what we get every year, what people are waiting and standing in line for is a flu shot. To let folks know, we do have the availability to provide flu shots as long as, as well as COVID shots at the same time, there's no horrible reaction from that. You might feel a little more under the weather for the first twelve hours, which is to be expected, that's your body doing its work. So I just wanted to encourage everyone to, to receive the vaccine, first clinic being October fourth. Once again, returning to Sterns from three to seven PM in the evenings. They've been so gracious over there with their support, the new leadership has really been very receptive to our efforts, and I wanted to publicly thank them for that. Anything else?
Thank you, Todd, and you had mentioned that the flyer is upfront, we have the flyer here. It has been sent to Amber, so it's gonna go into the Millinocket, our newsletter that goes out, and it will be in the paper as well, so I know we're trying to get it brought out as much as possible. I do have one question, and then we'll turn it over to the public. If this is the Pfizer vaccine for other people that got Moderna before, you just explained that they're kind of mix and match, and it's okay to go ahead.
Sure, I'd be glad to, thank you. The, the nature of these vaccines is very fortunate, the technology, the mRNA technology is very valuable, very, it works very well, there are very few side effects that, in regards to mixing and matching with other vaccines. So if you receive the Johnson Johnson, if you've had the Moderna shot, or if you've had the Pfizer shot, you can mix and match with these booster shots. Hence, the reason we, the only reason we went to Pfizer was just on sheer availability. The Moderna's, Moderna's production was low, and I thought our community deserved to have something to cover as we enter into the, the phase of autumn. So we're not switching, we do have a little bit of both. Unfortunately, the, the public isn't, I can't, I cannot accommodate, oh, I just want Pfizer, I want to be brand loyal, I just want Moderna. You can mix and match, and it'll be very helpful if you do, because you'll get your shot a lot sooner.
Thank you. Is there anyone from the public that has a question or comment from Todd? Thank you, come up to the podium.
There's been.
State your name, thank you.
Sandy Sullivan, one oh four Sunset. There have been four shots so far, the, the two initial and then two boosters. Do you have to have had all four before you can get this? Or, because like you said, a lot of people came out and got the initial two. And from what I'm hearing, not so many got the boosters. So can they stop the, or forget the booster and just get this shot?
Sure. Thank you, excellent, excellent question. If you have had your primary series, that's all you really need to have had, is your primary series. If you didn't get all the other boosters, that's perfectly fine. However, this booster is specifically designed to to handle the Omicron variant, which the other initial boosters were not. So you do not need to be quote unquote, "up to date" on all the shot, on all the boosters to receive this one. That's why, another reason why I encourage folks to get this one as well. Thank you.
Any questions, thank you for your wealth of information.
Great.
Thank you. Oh, we have one more question. Come right up to the podium. State your name, address.
Jesse Gobey, ten Somerset Street, Millinocket Maine, thank you, Todd, for coming tonight. And you may have said this before, and I just didn't hear you. This is a free, free clinic, and if so, where does the funding come?
Also, another great question, I'm, the nature of, I'm not gonna turn my back on you. This is a free vaccine, and the funding comes strictly, directly from the government. Millinocket Regional Hospital through its, has the ability to charge, has always had the ability to charge an administrative fee, me literally having the ability to put the shot in your arm, and we have chosen not to from the very beginning because we wanted to not have any burdens to anyone receiving this vaccine. I know that, that some locations in other states have also done that, but the state of Maine and the hospital has very generous in making sure that this shot is available to anyone with no barriers for financial reasons or for, for any other reasons for that matter. So no, this shot is, is, is free, always has been free, always continue to be so. The, the original stockpile comes from the federal government. Allocation goes to the state specifically, and then the states support that effort in distributing that vaccine. Keeping in mind, it's not just vaccine, it's a big box of syringes and needles and all those other things that really cost money as well. So the efforts from the state federal government have been really exceptional in supporting our efforts. Thank you for the question.
Julie Archie, four seventy-three Roosted Avenue. Thank you, also, and the hospital for all your help with vaccines. My question is, do you have any idea what side effects are from these vaccines? Because I know me personally, every vaccine I was down and out for three days. Thank you.
Another excellent question. The side effects from the vaccine are, are from this bivalent vaccine are consistent with other booster shots. So you'll have a sore arm, you'll feel kind of achy, some people do have a mild, a low-grade fever. I found in my own self that I, it felt for me like the worst day of the flu, and it lasted less than ten hours. Those who are immunocompromised may feel a little bit differently, but keeping in mind that this is your body doing its work. This is your body building those immunity. So even after a flu shot, you feel a little crappy. After a tetanus shot, your arm aches for three days. I mean, the, the side effects specifically of the Pfizer versus Moderna vaccine are the same. So we can anticipate that, if you, whatever ration, reactions you had in the past is very possible that you have a similar reaction in, in, in the future as well. So, um, it's literally the same.
Any final questions, comments? Counselor, thank you so much for, for coming this evening.
Thank you very much.
We will move into our second special presentation, Katon-Turism Partnership, and it looks like Eric Goodwin is joining us by Zoom. Good evening, Eric.
Hi, everybody, can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
I, is Randy in the room also, Randy Jackson?
Randy is in the, in the back of the room, yeah.
Great. I'll just give a, a intro, I guess, we wanted to update the town to an exciting step on, on the Plaza, the Millinocket Heritage Plaza. We've gone through an RFP process that you guys knew was upcoming, and we had, I think it sent out to four or five different individuals, but three of them got together and submitted one proposal, so it actually worked out very nicely. We got the Copeland Associates, who is the folks who drew the original vision back in two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen. And with, they bring a team, they bring Haley Ward, the Woodworth Associates, as well as Acadia Design Works. So it's a wonderful team, and we currently have McNally Land Surveys onboarding to do the survey work that will start the whole process. So we have, it's a two-phased process, the first phase is to get to the final concept drawing. And once we get to the final concept drawing, then that drawing can be taken to blueprints and construction drawings, which would be the, the green light to go to the building phase. So we're, we're happy to be delivering that kind of next step and open to any questions or discussion, or if Randy has anything to add.
Thank you, Eric, do we have any council questions, comments? Then I will take it to the public, are there any questions to the public, from the public? I'm not seeing any questions from the public or the council. Your update was short and sweet. Counselor Prey?
I was waiting for you to come back to the council, but that's, that's fine. Randy's been actively involved in this. If you don't mind, we could wait a couple of seconds, but while he's doing that, maybe Eric, I think some of the important things that we've talked about before, and it's the full council needs to be informed of, is, is part of that grander plan, obviously, that, that you would require the town's participation in some degree. We've been talking about putting restrooms adjacent to the facility there, and then there would be the question of the upkeep and the maintenances of that. This, I do have some concern, and I hope that, uh, similar to this, very few questions, the greatest fear is after it's proposed and out there, then people will complain instead of participating earlier in the process. So I would hope townspeople that are either following us, the list seems to be rather low, the report in the paper and whatnot, I hope would cover more that this is coming out soon, and that people that have an interest in what's going to go in that corner should be paying attention and should be participating to some degree. And Randy, just to update you, I, while you had to step out for a second, was just thinking that it's important that more townspeople be involved, or, or at least express their interest or concerns as, as this goes forward, as to some of the projects that are being proposed out there. And I do think, uh, Counselor Khalid has also participated on and off as he's been available, but I do think it'd be, it'd be nice to see more numbers out there. Thank you.
If I could.
Randy Jackson, one oh six Knox Street, Millinocket Maine. Yes, I, I agree, Counselor. But we have had the opportunity to express our, our interest and our concerns for this project in, in several committee meetings over the last five or six years. And I think we have opened our doors to the public in general to help us develop this part. And I believe we've given every opportunity for people to, to join us and voice their concerns. We're all the way up to the drawing phase of this project and a general outline. So to keep the process going, yes, we'll, we'll invite everybody that has an interest in the project, and I, and I do encourage them to come along, thank you.
Thank you, Randy. Appreciate, I know that you've been heavily involved in the project all along. And so Eric, did you want to comment before Randy got up to the mic? You were gonna follow up from Counselor Prey's comment?
Yeah, I would mirror what Randy said, we had some wonderful input early on to get to the initial concept. Would the surveys will tell us what the reality of like drainage and some of these infrastructure issues are. And we hope and expect the original vision, once those foundations are figured out, we'll be able to maintain that we won't have to adjust that vision significantly. If that were to happen, we would, of course, go out for a full round of public outreach. But we are also planning with this design process more public outreach. We're already going out to all the abutters in person, the surveyors are sending letters to abutters, and we'll be sending out, we, thanks to new funding, like many folks around, we'll be able to start sending a regular newsletter to let people update. We'll have an email for feedback, and we'll send other mechanisms of public engagement as well, including at least one meeting. And we will ask for the pleasure of this committee to come back and update at each step along the design process. And Peter and others have been wonderful about making us welcome these meetings, thank you so much for that.
Thank you, Eric, back to you, Randy?
Six Knox Street, Millinocket. Yeah, so the general concept, and it's not written in stone, but what we, the committee has come up with generally as an outline for that law is on the, on the northwest corner of, of the stoplight there, there'll be some type of artistic statue display, some form of art, artwork, outdoor artwork. Along and back, between that and the Millinocket variety, there'll be a kiosk of some description showing where you are, where you can get to some of the history of Millinocket and, and the park. There'll be a meandering walkway from that kiosk to Penobscot Avenue on a diagonal of some sort. There'll be some vendors, units along Penobscot Avenue, vendors won't be there all the time, but we'll plan to have appropriate hookups, you know, for them. And then in the, I guess it would be the southeast corner, there'll be perhaps an amphitheater of some sort and a, and a children's playground. So it'll, it'll all be landscaped, of course, and bring a, bring a, a presence of a, of a town common, you know, to that, to that area. You can see we put out some picnic benches, ADA compliant, by the way, look. So, yeah, we're, we're, it doesn't look like there's anything has been done there, but there have been hours and hours and hours of of a planning, you know, for that, we want to make it right, thank you.
Thank you, Randy, and thank you, Eric, for joining us this evening, and I know, we look forward to some of those concept drawings when you get that far enough down the road. Thank you. Any additional comments, questions from the council? Thank you very much.
I'd just say one real quick piece, that, um, public health is something we're very concerned of with here too, and we want to continue that conversation with both the hospital and the town about connectivity between the other plazas in town and putting walkability signage and whatever we can do to actively promote that health aspect. So I just want to make sure that that was put out in the public sphere, thank you so much, everybody.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is our manager's report. Mr. Manager?
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. It's good to see you over there. So we are going to be getting to more in-depth tax commitment conversations later on. It was the first item in my report, but I'm going to skim over that, we will bring our veteran assessor into the conversation a little bit later. And we will talk about that as we get into those orders. So the school budget referendum took place on September thirteenth. The budget did pass unofficially until about later this evening, one hundred and seventeen yes, two thirty-three no. So a couple of points on that referendum budget that I want to make to the public. When the school budget referendum comes forward in the next year, the question regarding whether or not to continue the community's vote of approval on that process comes into play for another three years. And I, I, I want to strongly recommend that our community take into consideration the numbers that turn out for these events that participate in the vote compared to our population. We are seeing about a hundred and fifty out of a little over four thousand people. And it does cost, you know, a combined total or not, not an actual total, but thousands of dollars throughout the day to, to pull off a, a referendum vote like that. And beyond that, the way the ballot is worded is that it is simply yes or no. So it doesn't necessarily give direction to the decision makers or those involved in creating those budgets and working collaboratively on them. It, it, it doesn't necessarily give them direction on, if the budget is voted down, what direction would they like to see it go? Even as simple as higher or lower would be helpful in that situation. If the, the community were to vote to keep it or or not keep that on, on the, on the referendum moving forward, it doesn't necessarily matter to me, I would like to see it very much more attended if we were going to continue spending on that process. And I'd like to see more involvement, so please keep that in mind for the coming year. So there's been some activity between, surrounding the local ATV clubs and the National Monument. I've attended several meetings recently since the announcement from Senator King's office regarding the possibility of a National Park Service being permitted to acquire land surrounding the Kitten Woods Waters National Monument. I was able to speak with Senator King directly and briefly as well as Representative from the Trust for Public Land, who is working alongside of them for some of those land acquisition. There, you know, so, so we spoke regarding the lingering potential of impact to our local ATV clubs and community. Specifically, the trail connectivity from Northern Timber Cruisers to the East Branch Snow Rovers trails. This. Um, this, it, it, that connectivity, as we all know and have talked about many times, um, has very good potential for, for positive economic, um, benefit to our community. Um, so most recently, uh, there was a meeting at the Northern Timber Cruisers that I attended along, alongside other ATV clubs in the state, uh, you know, from our region, uh, some state officials. Um, and Edie Smith and Carol Woodcock from the offices of Senators King and Collins. It was, it was a great meeting. I think it was constructive. Um, and I've made it crystal clear of our, um, that we see both of these things as, um, you know, the, the, the trail connectivity and the potential entrance to the National Monument from Millenacaman as, um, positively impactful to our community. And we don't want to see one happen without the other. The impression that I have received in each conversation is that it is not out of the question. And everybody has been very open to the idea so far. Um, but, you know, we, we do not have final word on that yet. Um, but I would just encourage all of those who support, um, uh, both things to, you know, contact your, um, contact your senators and, and whoever else to make sure that you, um, share your support on that. They could both be very beneficial to our community. Uh, we would like to see them both happen. Um, so Amber Wheaton, our community initiative cracker, and I have met recently, uh, with Nick Seventeen from, uh, Ransom Consulting, Jim Byrne from the Environmental Protection Agency, um, regarding, um, a brownfield funding application that was submitted, um, last year. Uh, that application was not approved, but this meeting gave us the opportunity to, um, speak with Jim, um, who provided an overview on our application, helped us understand how, um, to be better positioned for approval, uh, when we resubmit the application in November. So that is, um, that application is in relation to the former Jim's dry cleaning lot. Um, and we also had great conversation about, um, potentially applying for brownfields assessment funds to be held locally. Um, it is something that is done, uh, more at the county economic development, level to my understanding right now. Um, but it is very possible for us to apply for a pot of funding that we can then make available to potential new businesses, yeah, who are interested in coming in, um, interested in property that may need, um, like a phase one assessment for, for brownfields, um, to kind of expedite that process and make things easier on them. So it, it, it could be very beneficial to our, um, economic development efforts. And we would be looking at that over the next year. Uh, so I'm going to provide some updates from our departments this evening. Uh, it is the second meeting of the month and that is how we do things now. So within the Public Works, uh, Department, there has been some, um, damage and some work, uh, done on the, um, uh, traffic light system on the central Penobscot, um, intersection. Uh, it was, the, the, the control box was recently, um, uh, struck by a vehicle. Uh, so it, it, it had some, some lingering damage there that, um, we were able to get taken care of, um, and, and some more coming up in the future, but all the functionality is, is great at this point. Uh, so we're very happy to see that taken care of. Uh, and then we also installed a new, um, receptacle in, uh, in Veterans Park for, uh, placement of, uh, animal waste. Folks, uh, walking their dogs, uh, you'll now notice, uh, beautiful new receptacle, complete with bags. Please, please, please make every effort to, um, do your part and use that receptacle for what it is used for. Um, our transfer station, uh, the old hopper there at the dump has gotten a facelift inside. So once the new LED lighting was installed, it became very bright and visible in there. Uh, so the Public Works crew and over enjoyed the folks, yeah, at the transfer site and were able to pressure wash the entire inside of that. Um, so, you know, the walls are the original color or close to it. Um, things are really cleaning up over there and really looking nice. So we appreciate the above and beyond efforts of, um, the partnership between those two teams. And also plenty of great, uh, work happening at the cemetery, um, some of which is completely volunteer-led, including the Knights of Columbus Monument, uh, which has been worked on by volunteers, uh, to be, uh, restored and, and given a facelift, as well as plenty of other, um, stones in the older section. Um, that is all done by a resident volunteer, uh, doing very great work. And we are also very grateful to have the staff there, the crew that is up. I think they're still up there at this point. Um, you know, mowing and maintaining the grounds up there. They do, they do a great job. And the world of our town treasurer, um, she's working to accommodate the FY twenty-two audit. Um, and has mentioned of a couple of, um, tax-acquired properties that would be, um, able to be put out, um, for action in the near future. Um, we have, we have held this process for a bit, uh, looking for, um, some closure to the discussion around what that process, uh, needs to look like and, and how it may be changed. We've spoken about that several times earlier in summer and I think it's far back in the spring. Um, so we would request some more guidance on how the council wants to approach that moving forward. Um, like I said, we do have two that I believe are ready to, to go at any point in time. Yeah. Um, and we have also, uh, received the first, uh, interest payment on the GNP Economic Development, uh, loan with our caton total on that payment was sixty-two thousand eight hundred thirty-two dollars thirty-three cents. Uh, so we are glad to see that moving along as scheduled. Everything in wastewater is going very well, as Jim and his crew say, the, uh, the plumbing is humming. And, uh, you know, I just can't say enough about that crew and how, how great of assistance they operate. Uh, there is yet another note in, in the report here from, uh, from wastewater about extreme plugs in our community. Um, we have people in certain pockets of neighborhoods who are continuously flushing, uh, materials into the sewer system that are causing, um, large clogs that human beings need to crawl into the sewer to, uh, get unclogged. And that is not a job that many people, uh, would volunteer to do at any point in time. We have a very dedicated crew who continues to do it, but I would very much love to ask anyone in our community who is flushing wipes and, um, Q-tips or, or anything like that. Even though they say they may be flushable, it is not true. Um, so please refrain from doing that. Um, well, over at the airport is seeing, um, a very steady stream of, um, jets flying and, uh, from, you know, the, the first half of September and continuously. Um, there's, uh, been quite a few in relation to, uh, folks who had recently completed the Appalachian Trail. Uh, so it's, uh, it's great to see that kind of rippling out and affecting our, um, departments of our town. Uh, Jeff brought the, um, airport's giant snow blower to the toucher truck, which was part of the Trails End Festival this past weekend. Um, and I think that he had probably just as much fun as kids that were climbing in and around that piece of equipment. It really is something to see. Um, so, you know, he and the others that were there with equipment, um, I think they had a great time and had a pretty good turnout. Uh, and also mention of the, uh, fly-in and cruise-in, which is, uh, happening on October eighth. Plenty of more information coming very soon on that. Um, in the assessing department, uh, Lorna has been, uh, focused on the commitment of taxes, uh, specifically getting, um, all of the, uh, real estate valuations, um, up to date and the personal property information, um, as well as verifying all the homesteadage exemptions. Uh, there has been, um, some adjustments made, um, in town-like valuation. Uh, we will talk about that more in just a little bit. Uh, but the goal there is to be in, um, one hundred percent, um, satisfaction in the fair market value and, and we do that to be in compliance with the, uh, the state constitution. Uh, so assuming that department is still, uh, working on, uh, entering the property card information into our database. We are working on digitizing a hundred years of files, um, into, um, you know, digital format and, and into our computer system. So that work is trucking right along. We're very happy to, uh, be into the process there. Uh, she also mentions, um, receiving a hundred and thirty applications for the tax stabilization applications to date. And it reminds us that the tax stabilization applications will be eligible next year, but are not eligible for bills we will be sending out this year. That takes place, uh, in the following commitment. And recreation, we have the, um, pool filter system being worked on. The filters are actually being shipped this week, according to this update. Uh, so we're happy to see that project coming along and grateful for the allocation of funding to take care of it. Um, youth soccer is taking place as well as youth, uh, football and field hockey. Uh, they are great programs. A lot of kids have a lot of fun in them. Uh, my daughter is one and absolutely loves to participate with that program. Um, I think everybody's doing a great job. And the world of our community initiative director, um, she is actively working on, um, you know, grant proposal after grant proposal, um, looking to, uh, both for projects we've never had funding for as well as look for ways to offset the cost of our, um, operation. So we have, um, plenty of projects in the works, um, spanning from, uh, efficiency main related upgrades to our building and facilities, um, to cut back on energy costs and all the, uh, costs and open that funding up for other, uh, purposes moving forward. Uh, to, you know, we are still seeking funding for, um, our rope tow project, the skito, um, and, uh, plenty of others. Uh, she has also submitted the application for the first grant to come out of the, uh, mainly the partnership. Uh, that will be to create the, um, local heat pump, uh, program. Not be a continuous program, but it will be a pot of funding where we can certainly help, um, quite a few people in our community to be able to purchase heat pump for their homes. Uh, we are looking forward to seeing that all come together. Um, she is also, uh, working in partnership with the library and Councilor Prey on, um, the coordination of the upcoming meet the candidates forum. Uh, so the date for that is out in an email. I don't remember it off my head. November fifth, October fourth, and that's going to happen at Millenacaman Memorial Library. Yes. Wonderful. Um, we hope to see many community members there participating. Um, so in the world of the tax clerk and tax co-, uh, the town clerk and tax collector's office. Concern I see here is, um, the FY twenty-one, twenty-two taxes. A combined total, uh, between real estate, personal property and, oh, looks like we've, we've got about, um, eighty-eight, eighty-nine thousand dollars, um, unpaid. Am I reading this correctly, Diana? Yeah. So we've, we're, we're, we're making progress there, but we still have a substantial amount of accounts unpaid. Nine, ninety-six between the two. Thank you for checking my quick math there. Um, they are just as busy as ever being the frontline for, um, and the forward-facing, uh, team of our community. They do an incredible job over there. Um, the upcoming municipal election has, um, uh, final names who are going to be included on the, um, on the ballot for this year. Uh, so for the town council, uh, for the three, uh, these are three-year terms. Names on the ballot will be Jesse DuMay, uh, Robert Higgins and Gilda Stratton on the school board for a one-year term. Uh, that would be Thomas Malcolm. And three-year term, that would be Kevin Gregory, Julie Huke, Kevin Libby and Amber Wheaton. So, and so we wish them all the very best on that. Um, uh, and some turnout here on, or some information here on the election day, um, for the school budget referendum. Again, stating the number is a hundred and fifty doll, a hundred and fifty people turned out for that vote. Um, to, uh, broken down into a hundred and seventeen yes votes, thirty-three no votes. Um, that will be finalized by an order this evening. And she adds here that, uh, an appreciated, uh, pizza order and delivery by the town manager was welcomed by, uh, the election staff and, and, and the, at the supper, supper shift change. That sounds like a real nice guy. Sounds like a real, real good, good guy. Um, and some mention here that we do have open seats on, uh, so there is one open seat on our planning board. That is an alternative seat that's available, um, as well as one three-year seat on the cemetery committee. Um, so if there is anybody out in our community who is interested in participating on that, please do. Uh, the last department I will break down for us this evening is fire, ambulance, public health and safety. We would like to celebrate the hiring of Joshua McGreevy as a new firefighter EMT. Um, he is finishing his in-house training and I, he is part of a class getting an additional training. Tom, what is the additional license he's trained for? He will be, uh, becoming an advanced EMT here in the near future. Young guy, local guy, uh, go-getter, real happy to have him on the team. I was, um, happy to be involved with the interview process on that. Um, and we are, uh, he, Tom is also working with myself and, and HR and setting up interviews for the assistant chief candidates. Uh, so we look forward to filling that in the near future and getting that ball rolling as well. Um, Tom's also just working on so many things. Um, there is generator testing at the school. Um, there is, uh, has been some issues with, uh, one of our ambulances, but, uh, the public works crew and mechanic have been very helpful in getting that all worked out. Um, he is also currently working on updates to our emergency operation. He is also currently working on updates to our emergency operation plan for submission to Penobscot emergency management, management. As well as working with gas tech on their upcoming tank replacements at Thirteenth Park. Attached to my report and in council packet are detailed reports from East Millauke Police Department for an update on our community as well as lots of great information coming from Millauke Memorial Library. Who I will add will be here October, I think the date is twenty seventh. The second meeting in October, we will get our quarterly update from library director Diana. She will be here to speak with us in person. I look forward to that. Happy to take any questions. Talk a little about commitment unless you would like to have that happen, Madam Chairman, during the order surrounding it. Now we'll leave that to you.
Any council comment on when we'd like to hear from the assessor? Council of price?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I want to compliment the manager again on my support.
Excuse me, Council of Price. I have a standing question for you. Do we want to hear from the assessor now or wait until the orders that we're going to talk about the middle rate? There is a little bit more to the manager's report and we're just jumping around a little bit. So if we can go right to council comments from the manager's report, why don't we do that and then we'll talk about?
Whatever the pleasure of the council is, I do know that we have the assessor here. She's waiting until we take that up. Maybe we ought to take that out of order and handle the
We did move those orders to immediately following this report. So we can talk about it at that time as well.
I wasn't going to talk about the assessment until we get there. I got about six questions for the
Just six pages.
So move forward with your comments to the manager's report today. Thank you.
Thank you. In reference to the school budget and the vote.
I'm sorry. If it's at all possible, since we're not going to go ahead and go right to the assessor. Could we finish the manager's report with the police department as well? So all the comments about the manager's report can take place right through because there is a section here that yeah, there is a section here. I mean, we went through the fire and everything else. And there's, I didn't know if we were going to touch any of the notes that were here as far as the police department and my calls and things that were necessary.
I, I didn't plan on breaking that down specifically for the sake of time this evening, but if you would like to, I'm happy to.
So Councilor Mardure, Mr. Manager has said that the report was there for us and that he was not going to go over it. So he had concluded his manager's report when it's your, when you want to give council comments, it's happy to hear your comments on the police report at that time. Thank you. Council of Price?
Thank you, Madam Chair. In reference to the school budget and the referendum, the council unanimously, the last time it came up, recommended that the town vote not to continue having to go out to the public. And I think the public rejected us something like seventy to thirty percent voting and we'll send it back out. So we need to do a better job of pitching that it doesn't. And one of that, one of those pitches is the fact that if people objected to the school budget, all they're going to do is take out a referendum question and bring it to a vote anyway. Get a percentage of the previous election, they could still put it on the ballot. But to that, it's important that we, that the school board get the budget in time so that we're voting on the school budget when we have, we normally have the June primary instead of voting on it in August or September or whatnot. And if they, if the budget came in on time, we probably could always have it ready for the June primary. And so just a point to stay on top of that going forward. In reference to public works in the, the work in reference to some of the vandalism that's taken place, obviously at Veterans Park and, and down on the next to Millauke extreme. I think the town is going to need to look into some cameras or something around these public places. And I would hope that the East Millauke Police Department or even Town Public Works might go to the school systems and have a conversation with kids as to that these things all end up costing their parents additional monies. I understand, I'm assuming it's kids. I might be on or young adults that out there with something to do that kicks a light over shining onto the Veterans Monument up in the Veterans Park or rip, trying to rip down one of the electrical outlets down next to Millauke extreme. But it does come back costing the taxpayers to address those items. And reference to the last point in installing the dog station. I would like to see an order on the next council meeting to double the fines for people who do not pick up after their pets. The installing those things are good for people who pick up after their dogs anyway. But I think a lot of those who aren't picking up after their dog still aren't going to pick up. And we need to send a clear message that we seldom get them or catch them. But if we have a hefty fine out there, the few times they do it, they might stop doing it. So I would like to see an order to double the fine for discussion purposes at the next meeting. On the transfer station, I know we got put off and having MRC come up and talk to us, the municipal recycling center topic, that is ongoing. And I just think that we should have a fiscal update to what the status of MRC is on that. We're continuing to pay for shipping the waste. I know there's a desire by some to go back to perk, but perks can't burn everything they get and they can't bury everything that they get. It's a question, I think every community, a hundred and seventy four communities that are under MRC should be fully aware as to what that situation is because what solid waste is a significant problem. We have talked before about having either a bag fee or something at the, at the recycling center. Usually gets voted down. I know there's a lot of several people in town. Quite several people have said they're not going to recycle or anything. We're not doing it now. But that, all that stuff is just adding to the cost of the, of the transfer station and handling of waste. I want to thank the staff at Public Works and the volunteers who helped out the cemetery. They always do a good job. They always step up. The cemetery in the last year or so has had seen significant improvement. A lot of that credit goes to Bob Healy and getting other people and there are always people that were wanting to go up and pick up. Excuse me, there. But it's nice to see the community volunteer stepping forward and getting that done. I did talk with the code enforcement officer today in reference to handling some of the property complaints. And I know that it's an ongoing thing, but I had a couple of property adjacent property owners to some of those sites in the last week, two of them at the, at the end of trails festival came up and asked how that's advancing and when can they expect to see some type of addressing those adjacent properties to, to their homes. Their homes are in pretty good shape, well maintained, well up kept, up kept. One of those days. And I'll hold off on the assessor later. Candidates night is October fourth, which was mentioned six to seven at the school library. I don't know if you said the, the library, but it's going to be at the school library because it has more room. It's going to be, the library is going to film it and, and if the town can use its Facebook page or whatnot to do it as well, or at least afterwards, the library and the town to post those. But I think it would be advantageous if people themselves showed up to see the candidates and hear what they're proposing and what, why they're running. Congratulations to the chief and getting some more people on board, getting them trained and getting them there. Hopefully we can finally get up to full staff in somewhere in the near future. And I I'm going to wait to hear from Councilor Mardure on the, on the police report because I had a couple of questions or concerns too. So I'll, I'll wait for his comments, but thank you very much again for the report.
Councilor Mardure.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Let's go right down through, especially the school budget referendum. This is getting to the point where you want it's a fine line between whether you want, you want a community involvement and yet not getting community involvement and still having to go through a process. We're down to a hundred and fifty votes cast. It, it's costing more to do this than it is to actually you know, pass the budget through. The budget is, is done by the school, passed by the council and the manager is absolutely right. There, there is no, even if for some reason they voted the budget down, there is no nothing telling you why the budget was voted down. Was it voted down because they wanted to be higher? Would they want it to be lower? Today, you know, it, it's simply a yes or no question. The turnouts are getting smaller and smaller and it's not cost effective. And I do believe that probably we need to do a better job as council to go ahead and see if we can get this off the, you know, not renew this in the coming year. Have the townspeople not hope to renew this for another three years because it really is just, just a nuisance and it's getting to be worse. So I would like to see it gone. As far as the ATV club, I would like to think or believe that there is a way that the two options could exist. Again, I'm optimistic that an entrance through Millenocket to the monument and the snow and the ATV access has been worked on for seven years by the ATV club, the Snowville Club and more specifically John Raymond is the head of that to try to come up with something so that both can mutually have access to that area. I don't want to see the ATV club's work go down the drain because an eleventh hour step in by a federal authority to try to get access to the monument. I think both have merit to the economic stability within the town of Millenocket. I think both have a, a good chance of succeeding. But you can't, it, it can't be ever put down. It's an either or situation. There's got to be common ground that can be struck. And I'm hoping that they can work it out because if not, it's a shame because we're going to lose one or the other or both. And ultimately it'll be the people of Millenocket that will, that'll be hurt in the aftermath. As far as, I, I want to bring up something really quick and that's basically and it's not on the agenda as such, but I want to congratulate people involved with the Trails End Festival this year. This last weekend where we had the Trails End Festival was absolutely fabulous. As I've mentioned to Councilor McEwen already, the music was probably the best that I've heard since the festival started. As far as the, the variety and the spectrum of music that came from the bands that participated. The, the atmosphere was festive. People were happy. There was a lot of people getting, you know, a lot of give and take as far as conversations concerned. It was great to see. I understand the pub crawl went fairly well. But again, culminating with a breakfast down at Trails End Festival that was, I understand, very good. My daughter and son-in-law went to that and said that it was good and it was nice to get out at midnight in Millenocket and have something with the lights on, you know. So yeah, congratulations to the committee. To Councilor McEwen, to the people in the committee who work so hard. Chief Malcolm, Amber Wheaton and all the other volunteers that were involved. They did a great job and I look forward to next year. It, this though, I will admit this year is going to be a hard year to pop. If they continue to keep building this onward and upward, I'd like to see, I'm really anxious to see what they and public works, I don't know if anybody has noticed, but the new street signs are starting to be put up that are blue and white. They did find them. You can see them for quite a ways away. They can identify the streets now and without having to actually, you know, be right on top of the sign to see it. I like to thank our public works director for making the change and finding out the information and be able to make the change. I think it was great. As far as the transfer station is concerned, that was long overdue. The transfer site building, the lighting cleanup, the proper painting of yellow to identify somebody not going into the hopper. Whether it be physically or with vehicle. I, I think it's, it's a step in the right direction and I'm glad it's all done and it looks good and congratulations. The cemetery I want to mention too, if, I don't know if anybody has noticed, it hasn't been fully mounted yet. But talked about all the work that's being done up there. The Knights of Columbus are also they're going to put a monument up there or in the old section for the children who do not have markers up there anymore in that old section as a remembrance of for them. It's going to be a stone that's going to be placed along monument road that should come in on the, on the right hand side. And I, I think it's a very touching and very well thought out and very appreciated piece to put a monument or a marker up there for the children who no longer have a marker. But just to say, you know, that they're not forgotten. And I appreciate it. I want to commend the Knights of Columbus for that. I think it was a great job on their part to do that. As far as the the tax required properties are concerned, every time it comes up, we, we bandy about new ideas as far as how to to sell tax required property and how to put it out there and how to put it out for bid or how are we going to sell it? I would like to, I'd like to see maybe a committee or something to sit down with treasurer and the manager to try to get this finally down so that it can be done properly. So that we don't have to revisit this time and time again when we have tax required properties comes back on how we are going to post it and how we're going to sell it. So that it's done, the bid process, it's all taken care of and it is finalized and that is it. And I thank Architadon for making their their loan payment. Every once in a while I hear somebody in the community or hear people in the community that's, that think that we are we are taking care of or we are showing preference to, or we are doing something just, you know, more so out of the box for Architadon and for anybody else or any other and I want to tell you that Architadon is a a valued member of the community and they carry their own water. Town, they don't, the town of Millenocket is not doing anything special for them that they're not going ahead and taking care of their responsibilities and that. And this loan payment is just a prime example of that. So thank you, Architadon, for being right on top of the situation. On the, the police department which more and more, I, I see where in the items, I see that the, you know, the number of impaired drivers and the increase in drug related OUIs and the police department wanting to go ahead and they have a need for a drug recognition expert on their staff. I would encourage the police, our, our East Millauke Police Department to follow through with this and get somebody on staff because I do believe this is a problem within our community. And impaired driving isn't always drunk driving. They're driving to be a lot of things and eventually I'm afraid that somehow, somewhere. I hope it never happens, but my greatest fear is that a child is hurt to an impaired driver when it has to do with something other than alcohol. And so I'd like to go ahead and encourage the East Millauke Police Department to certainly follow through with a drug recognition expert on certainly follow through with a drug recognition expert on staff. Thanks to them again for bringing the two people who were involved in littering on the monkey trail. And hopefully, they find the third person that they're looking for. I I would like to have seen more of a police presence during the Trail Ends Festival. Usually when we have festivals and things, we have a lot of walk around. We have at least one or two officers that walk around for a while during the festivities in case there is a situation or whatever. And I would encourage that as these things go on further, that we have more of a police presence at these events just for the sake of public safety. That's really the last thing I have, Madam Chairman. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilor Madora. Any other councilors? Councilor McEwen?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. When it comes to the ATV Club National Monument, I do hope that there can be a clear path forward to have both parties utilize that area of land for the benefit of all. And thank you, Mr. Manager, for voicing that opinion of ours in several avenues. It's going to be detrimental if that can go through, especially for the connection. When it comes to some of Councilor Prey's comments on vandalism and security, I think it's very important that we could start, we should look into some security for the park, given we did just dump in a bunch of money for improvements. It was from the state, but with that, a lot of, you know, planning went involved to that, and I think that extends also Heritage Park. We've talked about the transfer site in the brush pile. We don't, unless you catch someone in the act of doing vandalism, there's not going to really be too much of any recourse. And I wanted to put a note of caution in going to try to educate the student body about vandalism and not to vandalize for the sheer caution of psychological reactance. I worked with a variety of students, but I do know most of my time was spent working with the students that if you told them not to do something, they're going to turn around and go do it more. So just a word of caution. I think getting security cameras, though, to actually catch the perpetrator is going to do more good than making it a bigger situation where we could attract more vandalism. So just a point of that. Other than that, a lot of good points. Thank you very much for the kudos on the festival. And just that, it was many hands. This town, several departments, many donors, individuals, through businesses and organizations, profit and nonprofit, and this community. So thank you. But it's, we put a lot of work in, but we were even more happy to see the turnout that came out for the festival, especially on Sunday when it rained. And we still put it on. And we still had people, the weather held up, and they were dancing and singing and moving along in the park. So thanks to everyone. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor McEwen. I have a few comments. School budget referendum discussion, we've had a lot of discussion around that. I guess it's just going to come down to education as the school year goes on and the next budget season happens. So it'll be, we'll just have to be on top of that educating our community members why or why not. It's a good idea going forward. The ATV club and monument discussion, I'm very thankful that you've been at the table for different conversations and reached out to folks. And I too believe it's not an either or, it's a both. We need both here to for economic pres- prosperity. EPA Brownfield, the discussions that you're having with Ransom and Jim Burn, keep having them. They have funds, they think highly of Millinocket Architadon, and set a great track record with receiving Brownfield grants, Brownfield grants. And I know when they had the open house in the last time, Architadon gave us some updates. There were just lots of, lots of great conversation, a lot of kudos for what was going on here, and they love Millinocket with the message that I got. They want to help as much as possible. So I appreciate that you and Amber are working hard to bring some of those grants here for us.
Totally on board with your comments, Councilor Mador. As far as a drug recognition expert for the Police Department, I hope they can find somebody. It sounds like they've got somebody interested in the training. I know it's cost, it's costly, and it's time consuming. So if they've got somebody willing and wanting to do that, totally support that investment. It will, it's important for us in our area. I too enjoy Trail End through the eyes of my grandchildren. Wasn't able to sit and enjoy the music, but I spent a lot of time in the municipal parking lot with the touch truck, and I will tell you, our East Millinocket Police were were there and taking pictures with kids and talking with kids and and the big snow blower, snow plow from the airport was a huge, huge draw, as was the ambulance and fire truck. So thank you for making that kid, that part kid-friendly, expanding on that. That was, that was very nice. We will now go to the public for any comments. Councilor Pelletier had given me the nod that he didn't have a comment. We had, we were in contact. Yes, we were in communication. Yes, I did not overlook Councilor Pelletier. Sandra.
I, Sandy Sullivan, 104 Sunset. As far as the referendum for the school budget, I'm going to guess that if you ask the average citizen on the street, how much it costs to have that vote, they're going to say cost? They have no idea. And so my recommendation, and I don't know if there are if there are constraints on what you can put on on a boat, but the people who really count are the ones that actually go vote. And so can it be worded somehow that do you want to continue this at a cost of $3,000 to the town? Make sure that the people doing the voting know how much it costs, that this isn't just free. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else?
Hi, Julia Archie, 473 Rose Avenue. Yeah, I'm sure that I get it. I have a couple of things as far as the wastewater goes. You guys do realize that the people who are flushing wipes and stuff aren't paying attention to these meetings or reading the reports. I just didn't know if there was a way to put it on the wastewater bill, some sort of a note or something, so every household sees it. I just thought that would probably be easier because the ones flushing the wipes, just like the ones who, you're going to put the dog baggies out there, the ones who are doing it aren't going to use them. The other thing, the Trails End Festival was awesome. It was fun, even though you called me a couple of times. As far as the police report goes, I do agree we need a drug recognition expert, but what happens afterwards? They recognize someone is on drugs. What happens? They get arrested, they get bailed out, low bail, they're back out on the streets in five hours. With, there's no reprimand, nothing, because the courts are so overbooked. And everybody in town knows how I am when it comes to drugs. But there's no reprimand. They're out, they get a slap on the rest, and that's it. And and that goes back to like the monkey trails. You know, where she, they put on here about Facebook posts and how they're not being called. To the best of my knowledge, they knew for about a month what was going on on the monkey trails. A child could have been stuck with a needle. So why call? Honestly. We had an incident today, and I understand mental issues, but there was a gentleman in town walking up and down both these streets today. I locked the door at my job because he came right up to my door. The police were called by a local store. They said there was nothing they could do. What happens when this man hurts someone? What if it's your grandchild? Your sibling? Your child? We need more. We can talk, talk, talk all we want about what we plan to do, but talking is cheap. If we don't do something, I stopped going to all these meetings about planning. Well, we can plan all we want. And then this, I was just recently found out this week about a, I don't know if the police are aware of the town is, about a homeless crisis protocol. It's on the main statutes. I'd be, I'd send it to you guys concerning homeless people. The things that they are allowed to get away with, as long as they look at an officer and say, I don't have a home. Things like criminal trespass, disorderly conduct, indecent conduct, urinating in public, possession of scheduled drugs, as long as they're using scheduled drugs, public drinking. These are things that homeless can get away with. It's actually a statute in the main legislature. And I think I have, as far as the observed offenses, the juvenile problem is huge in town. And and again, they have no, no repercussions. They have, nothing gets done to them because they're juvenile. And then their names aren't put out there, which to me, if you're sixteen and you do an adult crime, your name should be in the paper. People need to be aware of these kids because some of them are dangerous. We've had a few incidences in town over the past year. I was involved in one of them. Thank you for listening.
I appreciate your comments. I do want to follow up. I I know we talked about a mailing and providing information. I don't know, was the sewer bills or tax bills coming up about not flushing certain items? Is that underway or might that happen?
Well, our our next billing, as I said last time, is in October, so if there is something that needs to be inserted, we would have to get that to the printing company as the same process of the tax billing. I'm not sure who or where that needs to come from. Maybe Jim can write up something for an insert you know, expressing exactly what is needed or not needed from the community.
So it's very timely. Still can have it. We haven't missed the window of opportunity.
No. We just need to make it. The bill would be going out end of October, so.
Thank you. Councilor Prey?
In in reference to that, and we talked about it at the last council meeting, the previous one. And and I think the big, the best possibility really is somebody like the Cataden News putting it in there that there's a cost. And as we mentioned before, if it happens before it gets to the sewer line, the individual is going to be ending up paying literally, I I, Jim could tell you right off the hand, probably a couple thousand dollars to get it dug up minimum, and then another thousand or so to get it cleaned out. Of course, the difficulties, a lot of it currently is going out into the main line and causing those problems. But I think you're putting it in the bill or into the postcard, so you can't really put it in the bill. It was going to envelopes.
We have gone to envelopes.
Okay.
Have you received one?
And I suspect most people open up and say, it's a wastewater bill. Look at what the total is. They don't read anything else that's in it. But I'm not sure if it wouldn't do any harm to tell them again. I think if it's in the newspaper, people start talking about it to coffee shops and at the social clubs and whatnot, is that there's going to be a cost to this. And and maybe getting an estimate from Jim as to how much that potential cost is if it continues. And you get a story that you might be talking about overall several hundred thousand dollars or something to address it annually, then we might start getting some reaction of people taking care of it. That that's, if I could, just a couple of other things, only because first of all, in reference to King and Collins, I am extremely disappointed with both of them of not contacting any of the towns to talk about their proposal to expand it, not for nor against the issue. It's just the fact they should ask you guys, us guys, you know, we're going to support the expansion. And somebody might have brought up to to John Raymond or to others, we've got these issues and we need them addressed instead of having it being proposed in Congress. And now these people are trying to get their concerns addressed to them almost in a last minute attempt. I just wish that they had come to all the Jason towns and said that that this is what they're they're doing because it affects all the community. And just lastly, to Cody, I I I'm a former teacher. And I guess it's just the difference in your generation and my generation. But kids are kids, and yes, you're right, there's a lot of them will do it. But if we can reach a few of them, maybe when somebody else is going to do something, another kid might stop them. And I'm just hoping that somehow reaching them, maybe reaching out to them that we don't have these incidences in the first place. Thank you.
Councilor Mador?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. To go back to the the idea of, I think the council, the manager, could discuss areas where perhaps we need to put cameras to keep places safe, for instance, Veterans Park, other areas, and maybe try to go ahead and see if we can get an estimate on cost of installing cameras that could possibly go ahead and help us identify vandals. I mean, Councilman McEwen's absolutely right. You don't spend $300,000 and then have people go down and kick out lights and break things and that and not have some kind of repercussion, but you have to catch them. And Veterans Park especially is an ideal location. There are several telephone poles that got the outside of the park where cameras could be mounted, where people could, you know, kept an eye on. So I'd like to see the council go ahead and go along with the manager and try to identify areas that we feel that would be advantageous to have those cameras put up and what the cost would be to have them and maintain them. I also failed to mention one other thing to change gears here, but I'd like to give a special shout out to the rock of the festival, which I believe is Frank Manzo. Frank spent three days, long hours, early time setting up, late time taking down. Great sound. You can't have the music without the sound, man. He did a great job. He emceed real well. He stayed right along. He was out there in the rain. I just think kudos to Frank, you know, and realize that he was contracted to do it, but did a great job. I just want to mention, you know, I meant to mention before, thank you, Madam Chairman.
Back to the public for comments.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. 10 Somerset Street, Jesse Doomey, still from Millinocket, Maine. I agree with Julie on a lot of the things that she said. Thank you for saying those things. I'm glad Council Prey just said what he just said about his disappointment to the senators, congresspeople, because you guys remember, they, I never remember attending meetings with you, sir, and you, sir. I don't remember if you were on there, but I almost feel like they sold us a bill of goods that I'm calling them on. They're liars. They're liars. They lied to us. They weren't supposed to be encroaching. They weren't going to grow. They weren't, that's not any of their intention. And now look at it, it's, they're going. And I wasn't a no park person. I wasn't a no birds, bees person. I wasn't any of that. And I came into it with an open mind, and look what happened. Just like a bunch of us, we got fooled, we got lied to. And today, and I'm going to say this, I'm probably not going to make any friends doing it, but they're lying to you again. The fix is in. They already have this planned out. And if you think anything different, that's why you said what you said, because you know better. They know what they're doing. This is all, this is all said and done. Just going to wait for it. I hope this town council supports. They know what they're doing. This is all, this is all sudden done. Just going to wait for it. I hope this town council supports. The tried and true of the ATV and the film mobile community. They have been with us for decades. For decades. It's tried, true. It's not a guessing game. Ask Sherman. Ask Stacyville. Ask Medway. How are these communities doing? Shinpon? How is it? How is that? Where's the explosion of growth of NWW? If we think that we're going to get an explosion of growth and then can we handle it? We have restaurants shutting down right now because we can't employ the ones that we have. And I'm not trying to be a Debbie Downer at all. I want the best for us. I can't see, sir. I'm sorry. How are they doing up there? How's the whole community doing? Much better? I'm glad to hear that. What's that? I'm glad to hear that. I hope the other ones are doing just as well. I'm just sure that there's, hopefully there's some data out there. We're not just hoping before like we were before. Hopefully John Raymond and them can keep, hopefully, hopefully you're right. Hopefully they can all work together in, in the best of both worlds. I'm just very skeptical. And I'm very skeptical because of the lies. When it comes to the park. This, this park over here, Heritage Park. I remember being on the council and we, we pretty much gave away the old. The old lot over here with, uh, the new, new berries. We gave them that. The scenic highways and byways. And then Fred's gone and nothing happened. It's like we've been treading water here just, and I didn't want to say anything because we're kind of like. Holding our breath for, thank goodness for Randy Jackson and his crowd for stepping up and doing what they're doing. I've never met this gentleman. Eric, that was up here, but. I'm glad to see that they finally have traction and something's going to happen out of it. It's just millennial people. We've been waiting for so long. We've been waiting for so long for something really good to happen. And, uh. On the police report. If you guys notice, there's, there's. On the ATV portion. Anybody in town ever see ATVs racing up Katana Avenue or across Scott Street or in the new development? I mean, I get people. Messaging me and calling me all the time. Telling me, have you seen this? Have you seen that? And we see them where I work. Flying up and down a roosted. I mean, twenty-five, thirty, thirty-five mil. I mean, I'm going thirty-five up Central Street and they're racing past me. I know they caught the one guy. But what about the rest of them? I mean, this is a big problem. And some of these side by sides. Are as big as vehicles. No insurance. Licensed driver. You don't need to be a licensed driver for that. So you have uninsured, unlicensed drivers on the same street as people that have insured vehicles and stuff like that. I mean. It's just, it's getting to the point where it's causing the problem. If it's not going to be monitored, and I know it's probably just a few of the same people. But you've got to get a grip on this stuff. And I know the season is just about ending, but. This is something to look forward to next year. Hopefully they can get it all worked out. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jesse. Appreciate your comment. Um, before we close out this session, I just wanted, or this section, let me say that, Mr. Manager, you asked for guidance on tax acquired properties. Do you feel like you got the guidance you, you wanted before? They come back to the council. I know we did have some committee meetings because Council Palatier brought some suggestions for, um. What do you? Did you get what you needed tonight, I guess?
No, I do not feel like I got what I needed this evening. Uh, and you're correct. We did have several discussions in committee meetings, um. Regarding how to reformat that. And they were. Basically left as ideas. Um, so I am hoping that. That committee can come together very soon. Um, and make a final recommendation. Uh, we do have several and I believe, you know. Even a few more, uh, coming up in the near future. Uh, so we would like to get those taken care of. Uh, as efficiently as possible.
Was that the Economic Development Committee that we were at?
That was.
Or sustain? I can't remember which one because I know it's part of the conversation as well. I attended the meeting, but.
And so many of the, uh, same faces at fault. So, uh, it was one or the other. We will have to check the meeting minutes to. Or the recordings to, to find where it was.
And get a, get a meeting established ASAP.
Correct.
Great, thank you. So we'll move on to the agenda for order number two forty-five dash twenty-two. Uh, Council McEwen, can I have you read it?
Yes, Madam Chairman. Order number two forty-five dash twenty-two, providing for commitment of FY twenty-three property taxes. It is ordered that the fiscal year twenty-twenty-three. Property taxes be committed and the due date for the first half payment is thirty days after the commitment date. Second.
Motion made by Counselor McEwen, seconded by Counselor Mador. Comment. Would this be the time that we go to the manager to? First.
I would recommend. That be. Discussed in order two forty-six. Lorna, do you have some input on that? One or the other?
Be happy to talk to you guys.
Let's all, let's talk.
Uh, happy to be here with you tonight to discuss this and, uh. And I'm short and to. Give you the information that you need when you get questions on the street. Uh, also extremely joyful that I am not part of Jim's crew and part of the clogbuster team. My job looks really good at this point. So my goal tonight is to answer all the questions and Charlie will have nothing to ask me when we're complete.
That's a challenge.
The manager and I and Mary Alice have been working together. We've, um, had to make some adjustments this year with valuation. I know you're aware of that. We did that last year with about a six percent. Adjustment across the board for all properties. So we did a little bit more of analysis this year. And a flat adjustment doesn't seem to be applicable because we have different classes of property selling at different rates. So. Trying to get, you know, the older homes, the new development and what our newer homes are more in line so that they're all assessed at the same percentage of market value. Shooting for a hundred percent for all of them. And what we did. For this year is a ten percent market adjustment on everything what I would call in town. All the older houses, the commercial, all of that. A twenty percent adjustment in their valuation for everything in the new development. And then a thirty percent adjustment for the other homes that are newer, like, um. The Brownville Road and Morgan Lane area, Outer Midway Road. Um, that is a start in getting things back in line with the market values that we've seen occurring. And unfortunately, the market is still outpacing our assessment. So with these adjustments, we're still not exceeding the normal average sale that we have within town. An example of that is we just had a sale come in. I think it was last month. It had sold a year ago for a hundred and ten. There have not been enormous. Improvements done to it. It just sold for one sixty-eight. I'm not sure where the market is going to go. We're seeing interest rates increase. That may tamp it down. Um, or maybe we're far enough out on the fringe. We don't seem to totally follow. The markets in Portland or Castine or Camden. We kind of march at our own little rate where we're out at the end of the dominoes. Um, so we thought we would make this adjustment this year, watch the sales for next year and see if we need to make another adjustment. I don't want to make an adjustment that is. So much increased that we overshoot and become, you know, a hundred and ten of market value like you have in past years. So these adjustments, I think, are a good start. They also help us when we do implement a reevaluation so that it's not a huge tax increase all at once. We're kind of doing it incremental. To try to limit that, uh. Going forward, that huge ouch. Um, with this adjustment, there are going to be some people that do have a bit of an ouch. So I took, uh, basically three sales that had happened in each of those neighborhoods, just to kind of do a little test run when we were looking at. Which rates, uh, will be more applicable. Last few years, we've raised a lot of overlay. We had a lot of questions, uh, regarding. What was going to happen with Brookfield and would we have enough money if we had to reimburse them? Uh, so we've had rather large overlays. Uh, this year, we're not looking at something as substantial as that. Um, we discussed it with Mary Alice to make sure that we. Do have enough funds to pay the things that are out there, uh, that we know of. So with this, um, rate that we're recommending at, um. Twenty-nine five. An in-town house is probably going to see a little bit of a decrease, maybe ten dollars in their bill. And I did these calculations ignoring all of exemptions, just straight value without paying any attention to homesteads or veterans exemptions or anything like that. Something in the new development. Is probably going to see. Hundred and fifty to two hundred dollar increase. And then unfortunately, um. The other homes, the newer, nicer homes, which are selling for substantially more than we have them assessed for, are probably going to see maybe even a three hundred dollar increase. Although the rate is going down, um. Everybody's tax bill isn't going down. Did I get most of your question? No? Oh, gosh. So, so basically that's what we're looking at. It's a, a rate of twenty-nine five. Gives us an overlay around seventy thousand, give or take a few more adjustments. Um, I did a little bit of a, a play commitment just to see where we would land. And, uh, have a few more tweaks to do it, uh, right to get things where I need to be. But that's basically what we're looking at for an overlay this year.
Thank you, Lorna. Questions in the council? Councilor Mador.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Um. For so many years, this council. It has been brought to the attention that. The high mill rate in the town and how it's, um. Discouraging businesses from coming in, people having a hard time staying in their homes, whatever. I consider this a, a three mil, you know, pension, basically a three mil drop in the mill rate. This year. And we're telling people they're going to pay more taxes. Because of the evaluation. Now, I know the evaluation has that happen. The revow has to take place. And it's way overdue and we're going to get in trouble with the state if we don't do it. And we have to do it. I just. It's going to be very hard to explain to. The. People in their homes, the retired couples, the. You know. How the mill rate went down and their taxes went up. And that's, that's going to be the PR problem that's going to happen in the town of Illinois when these tax bills come out. For this. And I don't know what the answer is at the time to be able to make this. This isn't like a Schoolhouse Rock where you have a nice little song to it and everything else and everything. It's a teachable moment, right? It, this is going to be a hard, hard thing for people to, to wrap their head around how this can happen. Now, the other part of that, that I, I think is, is the, uh. The cherry for this whole thing is. By dropping the mill rate, you, it's a better enticement for. Say businesses like the Foundry and Pelletiers and some of the other ones in town as far as. Their assessments and their taxes are concerned. Also, new businesses coming in, you'll, the town will look more favorable with the lower mill rate. So, um. I, I, I just don't know what we can put out there as far as, I mean, I understand your explanation and, and had the discussions with the manager and whatever. I just don't know what we can put out there. That breaks it down for the average citizen. To understand. What the hell happened.
It's a bit of a tax shift.
Yeah.
Uh, we're creating equity that we've lost due to the current sales environment where. Buyers, uh, choose what property they want and what they're going to pay for it. And so those buyers, maybe the way to explain that, are choosing the newer, nicer. Homes and paying more for them. Uh, so it's important for me mathematically to keep that equity so that there isn't a disproportionate. I mean, you could look at this and say the individuals with the nicer houses have been paying too little over the last few years. So it just kind of depends on which side of that. Page that you're sitting, how good it feels. I do plan on, uh, sending down something to design lab with a bit of an explanation and some of the recent sales so that individuals can see. These current adjustments to assessments still are not exceeding the sales prices that are occurring. Because that is based on the state's constitution. My challenge is to value properties at as close to a hundred percent of fair market value as possible. And I think that sometimes helps because if you've owned your property for a long period of time, you may not realize what kind of equity you're sitting on.
If I could, just one more thing. The, uh. I had a great train of thought there going for just a second and that went off the tracks real fast. Uh. I just want to make sure that, um. People do, I think, having something else that can be on the website, something else that can give examples. Uh, is, is very important for the general public to know what is going on and why we're doing it. Oh, I know what it was. If we do not do anything, if we do not do any more adjustment to the evaluation, if we do nothing to get ourselves up to where we are. What penalties or things would the state then? Lay down on us as far as funding? Sir, would you explain that?
So the state generally would not come in and be heavy handed with you, particularly in this market where. Many communities are struggling with these adjustments and changes in their valuation. The state does have the authority if we drop below, uh, seventy percent. Or if they feel that we are so inequitable to force us, um, to make changes. Do they do that? Rarely. Can they do that? Yes, they can. So from my perspective, I would rather be adjusting our own numbers and, uh, under our own control. Uh, meeting the goals that my license requires me to make and make sure that our community is equitable, you know, between taxpayers. It also keeps our homestead exemption valuation at a hundred percent. If we drop too low, we need to adjust that exemption by that ratio amount. And part of the other thing with this is. We're talking mostly about real estate, but if you also talk about the businesses and the personal property assessments, their mill rate has gone down too, while their assessments. Um, haven't seen an increase because we haven't, um. You, you don't see the sales with the personal property like you do with the real estate. So that generally an asset will depreciate as opposed to accruing value. That's not always the case, but it, that's a, a good general. So some individual beyond our real estate, um, people will see a decrease in their personal property taxation as well.
Thank you, Madam.
Councilor Prent.
The estimate is based upon the budget. That our town council has adopted.
Correct.
For the assessment based upon the valuation. Based upon. Your. Analysis of property sales. If we did not do this adjustment. Did you calculate what the mill rate would have to be?
I didn't, but we gained. I think about ten million dollars in valuation. About ten million dollars in valuation. So the mill rate would have gone up.
With your calculations, it's ten, municipal valuation has increased by ten million?
Rate about that, maybe a little more than that due to these adjustments.
To, to the division. Of the town into three sectors. The old town proper. For those of us who are older, that's several developments. As to how the mill developed and then expanded previously. And even in the new development, which is seventy years old. Um, that developed in about three different stages over a sixty-year period. So obviously there's different valuation of properties in those different sectors.
I'm not necessarily seeing that. And that's why I did the sales the way that I did. They seem to indicate. That area that's new development, old new development, uh, with larger lot sizes and newer houses. They, they really seem to clump together. I mean, you have some outliers. And basically that's just the difference between buyers and sellers. You have savvy buyers and you have buyers that I want that house no matter what. So you do have those outliers, but in general. It's fairly well, um. With the sales analysis to find. it's fairly well with the sales analysis to find us as the three that I have broken out.
And, and those who have come in and are the willing buyers are significantly different than those who have had homes for fifty, sixty, seventy years and now may be seeing an eight-hundred-dollar increase. So they've had a neighbor down the street that has moved in and paid and made them, gee, my property is this. But are we now going to force them into a, you now need to sell because your taxes are going to be so high to those who are on fixed income because we're a community, I think the average age is somewhere in the close to sixty.
And, and I understand that thought process, and that's a great heart to have. Unfortunately, I can't have a heart. I can't look at somebody's ability to pay. I have to look at just the, the data and what that house is worth.
And, and this is happening really because we have failed to reevaluate for so long.
It, it's been a long time coming. You know, we, we set for a long time at one particular value, and historically your valuations have been a little, you know, very low in comparison to the same type of house, say, in Orono or Bangor or Portland. You had a huge economic decline that played into it. But now it seems like we're moving on from that, whether it's because individuals want to retire here because we have the amenities they want or whether it's because they can work from home and be located here. I'm not sure as to why they're moving here, but that's what the sales are indicating.
Evaluation is, is, obviously you have a town valuation.
Correct.
Minus the property that the town owns, which is anywhere around six, seven percent of the total valuation.
I don't know that off the top of my head, but I probably have it in here somewhere.
It's, it's immaterial because it doesn't really get considered in the tax base.
Correct.
Those that's subtracted from the overall state evaluation of the town.
Correct.
To the town's valuation. And then, of course, we've had an increase in nonprofit companies, organizations purchasing a property. So that gets that
It's pulled out, correct.
The town tax role, calculations and considerations.
Correct.
Which leaves a larger burden on the remaining people. And then we have tax-quiet properties, which technically becomes town property.
Correct.
Also subtracting for that, so there's fewer people on, on that to pay for that. I, I would be interested if, if, obviously, to educate the public, if we had no valuation adjustment, what the mill rate would have to go up to. Even though we're getting additional revenues from the state and so forth. And I understand that's been calculated in, in your, you've worked with Sarah Alice to calculate the estimate for those revenues.
And I can do that based on last year's valuation and give you that calculation.
Well, except for, under the old system, the entire community valuation increase went from all sales and previous values of those particular pieces of property.
Not sure I just follow what you said. Can you say that to me in a different way?
In your example, you said you took three pieces of property in each of those sections?
Correct.
So those three pieces of property now reflects the entire increase of all those properties.
Just an average in general, just to see what was occurring, see how it hits.
But, okay, so we got twenty-four-hundred and somewhat housing units. So if you took three of twenty-four-hundred versus how many of those sold, I don't know what those numbers are, but I would suspect the numbers are higher in the old new development versus the newer development, which happened in the seventies, eighties and, and probably the early nineties versus the early development of the seventeen hu, of the early nineteen hundreds versus the new development first area was fifty-three. And then the next development came around seventy-three or so, and then the last set was in the mid-eighties.
So I think we may have had about forty to fifty sales in last year. So my intent was just to randomly pull some to, to try, one, to make sure that my sales analysis did not cause an assessment that exceeded the sales that were occurring. So that was part of the check. And for that, I looked at all the sales that occurred to be analyzed as part of our municipal valuation. But the exercise that we did was basically to see what that mill rate impact was on these different classes of property.
So these three zones, did you assess what the total valuation of that, of that property was that you increased by ten percent? And what the basic valuation was of that area that you increased by thirty percent?
I did not. I can because I threw it into an Excel spreadsheet to double-check my numbers. Trio doesn't really, the software program that we use is Trio. That doesn't really do it in that manner, and we are just getting, so now that we are getting the data back into the system so that I can sort by neighborhood and class of property. So it's not, if the program was the way that we had lasted in the ninety-four revow that had all the data in there, it would be easier to do what you're asking. But for me now, I have to take that extracted into Excel and then sort in an Excel program with these twenty-four-hundred parcels. But no, I, the short answer is no, I did not do that neighborhood specific for each class.
And, and the reason I ask that, because I would assume the ten percent zone, as you said, is the older, less valued property or resellable to a higher price. Probably a lot of that sells for valuation or a little bit under. Other areas are selling significantly over, but we've had a couple pieces of property that have significantly gone over what the previous valuation was.
We've had a number of them.
Morgan Lane section, you had one that went over double the price. I would assume you've had some that have gone, and you mentioned that one piece of property that one thirty to one
One ten to one.
One ten to one sixty. That, that might be high to that area versus what if there was forty, say, the other forty sales you had, there was thirteen, thirteen and thirteen sales, which I doubt. I would assume that probably about five or six in this area, twelve or thirteen or fourteen up in that area. You know, I would suspect those higher property had a higher sale ratio of the total properties of those forties.
So what I believe that I saw while I did my analysis was the fact that these newer homes were selling for a higher percentage compared to assessment.
Which is why you suggested.
Or to look at it in a different way, a lower ratio compared to assessment than the other homes. I mean, there may be a number of reasons for that. It may be that they've done improvements or built a garage that haven't been picked up in the last ten years. So there may be a piece of it that's not attributed solely to market. It may be attributed to some other improvement factors.
Another fact that probably will enter with a reaction from the public is the misunderstanding that many people think after a certain age they can freeze their property that their valuation for tax purposes.
Are you talking about tax stabilization?
I'm talking about the law that becomes effective technically next year, but many people believe it's based upon this current year. If we don't increase the taxes, then we've walked into that previous, whatever the other price is.
I had.
Valuation.
I had no consideration for that whatsoever. My sole intent on this was to comply with the law.
I understand.
Okay.
But as, as an assessor, if we don't, if we don't adjust these, then that's kind of a lost example to those individuals that could then freeze in at whatever we came up with as an alternative, not reflecting the increase of those valuations this year.
So yes, there, the amount that will freeze because of this increase is greater than it would have been if we hadn't done that increase. I mean, if that's, if that's essentially what you're saying, yes.
Which would then be a greater cost to the state to reimburse.
If that's how the law ends up being after the spring session.
Terribly written law.
Yes, unfortunately it is. Hopefully they do some work on it and, and make it better.
Thank you, Councilor Prey. Councilor McKeon?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a quick question. We wouldn't, in your opinion, professional opinion, would you not anticipate to see this kind of increase again next year, given this proportion changes here?
If we continue to see the market at the level that it currently is going for sales, I would anticipate there would be another adjustment necessary next year to keep pace with the sales that are occurring.
Thank you for that.
Councilor Prey?
A lot of concern has to be that the real estate market is changing based upon the interest rates of people buying houses. We've gone from around three-point-two-five percent for good credit rating to after today's action, probably closer to five, five and a half to seven percent, depending on an individual's credit rating. So sales may be going down.
Well, the other thing to consider though, these sales that I am working on are based on last year's state valuation analysis. So they're basically two years old at this point. So in the last two years, we've seen an increase in the sales prices as well. So even if it plateaued right now and stayed where it is now, then we would need to do an adjustment next year as well.
Thank you, Lorna. I really appreciate your expertise on this and to be able to answer the questions from a councilor prey. But I think for us, as the municipality going forward, and Councilor Mador alluded to this and said this, you know, it's going to be hard for the public to understand the mill rate's going down and the taxes are going up. So it's going to be who wants to be great communicators and educate and get as much information out as possible. So I, I know going forward, you'll work with the manager for those messages, education piece.
Exactly. And, and I have an open-door policy. Happy to, you know, receive an email or talk to individuals about it if they have questions or concerns or they feel we've overvalued it or there's something that we haven't considered. Maybe there's something about their house that has deteriorated. We're also happy to take a look at it.
Councilor Goward here.
Yeah, so increases that you're doing by the square zone, basically. People that have properties that were not improved or changed, say, over that period of time that haven't done it. When you do the revaluation of that property by property, that eventually that will, you know, despite it.
It will even out, yes, because we will physically visit, and if there is something missing from, from the car, like they tore down a garage and we didn't remove it, then that will be removed. Or if they built things that we didn't have on the property car, then we will pick it up at that time. So all be equal at that point.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. You mentioned a line of questioning. I would consider it more of an interrogation.
I'm used to that.
I wanted to make a couple of points. I also wanted to thank Lorna, the assessor, for such incredible work and, and the ability to field such very educated questions and do so with, with the most professionalism. I very, very much appreciate that. I want to make it very clear that, yes, mill rate goes down, some property tax that are seeing an increase. Similar situation last year with a six percent across the board, dropped the mill rate, many saw a slight increase. We have a revow of our town happening beginning next spring, next summer, that will impact a future tax bill. This is a situation that myself and others on our team have inherited, an inherited situation of things that have been neglected for a very long time. It is our job to fix those things. And yes, some of it's not great. Some of it is bad news. Some of it is going to affect members of our community. It's necessary that we fix it to be in compliance and to be correct moving forward. The comparison between doing this incrementally over several years and doing this in one fell swoop once a revaluation happens would be so drastic, so much more drastic than this or the change last year or the impending change in the coming one to two years. But it's going to position us to function properly like a community that has its stuff together, okay? We've inherited this. We are fixing this. We are going to use this to move forward successfully. This is one of many, many situations that we are coming across as I learn more about this role and what had been going on performance-wise for our municipality for decades. And I would like to personally invite Mr. Brown, who I know is in attendance online this evening. It would be undeniable to say that there will be a newspaper article about this in next week's and I would love the opportunity to speak with you, Brian, one-on-one, either tomorrow, Monday, whenever your deadline is. To make sure that we go through this and have all the information accurate. I would like to be sure that this is phrased correctly as not to start panic in, in some, in our community who it, who it ultimately would. I just, I just want to be out front and as transparent as possible, and I am, like Lorna had mentioned, my door is open. Chairman Golub says sometimes to a fault. But please, I'm more than happy to help educate anyone and everyone on this and how it works. As I am learning a lot of it as I go. Help of our local expert, Ms. Lorna here. So, thank you.
It's a team. We work well together, so it's, it's good. Happy to answer anybody's question.
Yeah, I just want to, I think we've, I think we've done a, got a great explanation, everything else I'd like to call.
I'd like to go to the public first. Any public comment? Yes, come up to the podium.
Hi, Sandy Sullivan, one oh four Sunset Drive. I just have one question as to how it relates to the new law coming in for us old people. Okay, my tax, I live in the new development. My taxes are going up twenty percent, but the mill rate's going down. That's going to be it for the rest of my life? It's not going to change?
It's really hard to say because I.
Go back to the microphone, please. Thanks.
It's really hard to say because I don't know what the legislature is going to do to fix some of the problems that exist in the current law of tax stabilization. So I can't apologize. I can't really answer that question because I don't know what's going to happen in the spring with some of the problems in implementing this law that was kind of put out quickly with some very well-intended individuals that didn't understand the implementation that was going to occur. So I, I apologize. I can't.
Theoretically, then, this is whatever tax rate goes in, excuse me, whatever, whatever taxes I pay this year theoretically.
In theory.
Is not going to go up on me. It could go down. It could go down, but it can't, if, the way it's written now, it's not going to go up.
That's the intent of the tax stabilization law. Thank you.
Just a friendly reminder on that, you do have to reapply every single year. I trust, I trust that you will be. I believe that.
Thank you, Councilor Prey.
I just want to make sure that, understand this valuation will come out. And the question about that form and that application is on the twenty-twenty-four tax bill, twenty-three, twenty-four, not twenty-two, twenty-three tax bill. So you understand it's still a year away before you even make application. You're making an application for the following year.
Before you receive the benefit of it. That's my understanding of the law, that what the bill is this year is what is frozen for future reference. It's very according to what I know right now. I don't have much pull in your car.
Mary Alice?
Mary Alice, caller in ninety-nine.
Mary Alice, Carlin, 99 Minute Man Drive. I just want to, with the information, I wasn't involved with this, this part of the process, but with some of, I mean, there were wide swings that I saw in selling prices from all, all sides, all different areas of town. And when you're talking about applying a ten percent factor in one section from twenty percent to thirty percent, numbers I looked at, the properties in the ten percent either were flat, or they might have raised a hundred sixty, fifty bucks versus up to the thirty percent. Some of the properties I looked at went up to six, the six hundred dollar increase, if I'm calculating this correctly. So when the time comes to lay this out as to the law, you know, as to the rationale and all of this, this is quite a shock. This is going to be quite a shock for some, for some, some of the taxpayers. And it almost seems like the ten percent is a little, is not shifting enough of the burden at this point until we have the revow and you have more firm information. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, I think we're all set to vote on order number two forty-five. All those in favor? Motion passes five zero. Councilor Prey, can I have you order, read order number two forty-six dash twenty twenty-two?
Yeah, out of rotation. It's okay.
Order number two forty-six dash twenty twenty-two, providing for setting the mill rate for FY this year, uh, twenty-three, it is ordered, the Millenac Town Council, that the FY twenty-three mill rate at twenty-nine dollars and fifty cents.
Motion made by Councilor Prey, seconded by Councilor McEwen. Discussion by the council. Discussion by the public. See a nun? All those in favor? Motion pass five zero. Councilor Pelletier, can I have you read order number two forty-seven dash twenty twenty-two?
Order number forty-seven dash twenty twenty-two, providing for setting the interest rate for year twenty-three, fiscal year twenty, delinquent taxes. It is ordered that the interest rate for fiscal year, delinquent taxes, twenty-three delinquent taxes, set at four percent and interest shall begin for the first half taxes on the thirty-first day after the commitment date. Second.
Motion made by Councilor Pelletier, who seconded it? Council, seconded by Council McEwen. Council comments? Public comments? See a nun? All those in favor? Order number two forty-seven? Passes five zero. Councilor Mador, can I have you read order number two forty-eight?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Order two forty-eight dash twenty twenty-two, providing for the interest rate for overpayment of taxes. It is ordered that the Millenac Town Council set the FY twenty-three interest rate for overpayment of taxes at zero percent. Note, subsection five oh six A, overpayment of taxes allows the municipality to reduce the interest rate for overpayment of taxes by four percent, four percentage points of what is charged, what it charges for the interest rate of delinquent tax. Second.
Motion made by Councilor Mador, seconded by Councilor McEwen. Council comments? Councilor Prey? Repeat the answer?
My question was that this is the same as what the council had done the previous year.
Any other council comments? Any public comments?
I understand why you're questioning that. It, it may seem different. It, it is still four percentage points, but last year was six percent. Um, the state said, the state had capped the, the four percent, so that's where you're seeing the difference. If that answers your, your question. Yeah.
All those in favor? Order passes five zero. I believe we're back in succession. Order number two thirty-seven dash twenty twenty-two, Councilor McEwen, can I have you? Order number two thirty-six. Thank you, Councilor McEwen.
Yes, Madam Chair, order number two thirty-six dash twenty twenty-two, providing for execution of the town warrant for September twenty-two, twenty twenty-two. It is ordered that the town warrant for September twenty-two, twenty twenty-two, in the amount of five hundred twenty-nine thousand, eight hundred ninety-four dollars, thirty-five cents, is hereby approved. Second.
Motion made by Councilor McEwen, seconded by Councilor Mador. Heavy hitters?
Yep, we have six thousand eight hundred eleven dollars, thirty-four cents from our KDA design work for NBRXV and Air Force. We have three thousand one hundred forty-eight dollars, Haley Ward for CDBG, car improvement. Three thousand six hundred seventy-six dollars, fifty-four cents for Royal Tanner Associates Air Force Master Plan. Two thousand seven hundred twenty-one dollars, sixty-one cents made municipal donation for unemployment. Thirty-four thousand, thirteen dollars, one cent, Main Water Company, hydrant rentals. Twelve thousand, Millenac School Apartment, Rex Apartment Electric, Electricity. Twenty-five hundred, RH Smith, RHR Smith and Company, Audgers. Ten thousand, seven ten for Steinworks, the wayfinding sign. Three hundred seventy thousand, thirty-six dollars, eighty-one cents, Town East Moloch for the East Moloch PD contract. Sixty-one thousand, nine hundred seventy-seven dollars, five cents, Underwood Electric. Veteran Park Contracting Cost. Nine thousand, six hundred twenty-five dollars, twenty-seven cents, Person Power. And one thousand, one hundred seventy-six dollars created visual imaging tax bill postage.
We already had, I'm sorry. Mr. Manager.
I just, I just wanted to make a quick point on the ten thousand dollar expenditure for the wayfinding signs. That's entirely funded by outside sources. So that wouldn't, it's not actually funding by the town of Millenac, right? That's a combination of CDBG funds from the state and money from the Northern Forest Center for the investment. So, thank you.
Thank, thank you for that clarification. Any comments from the public? See a nun? Take a vote. All those in favor? Order passes five zero. Councilor McEwen, can I have you read the next order, number two thirty-seven?
Yes, Madam Chair, order number two thirty-seven dash twenty twenty-two, providing for execution of the wastewater warrant for September twenty-two, twenty twenty-two. It is ordered the wastewater warrant for September twenty-two, twenty twenty-two, in the amount of sixteen thousand, eight hundred sixty-four dollars, eighty-nine cents, is hereby approved. Second.
Motion made by Councilor McEwen, seconded by Councilor Mador. Any council comment?
Yes. Heavy hitters, three thousand, three hundred thirty dollars, Main Water Company. And two thousand, two hundred thirty-four dollars, six cents, River Quality, Pierce Atwood for River Quality Settlement. Five thousand, four hundred eighty-five dollars, eleven cents, Person Power.
Thank you. Any public comments? See a nun? All those in favor? Motion passes five zero. Councilor Prey, can I have you read order number two thirty-eight dash twenty twenty-two?
Order number two thirty-eight dash twenty twenty-two, providing for ratification of the September thirteenth, twenty twenty-two school budget referendum. It is ordered that the results of September thirteenth, twenty twenty-two school budget referendum are hereby ratified as follows. It follows, yes, one hundred and seventeen, no, thirty-three, total vote cast, one hundred and fifty.
Second.
Motion made by Councilor Prey, seconded by Councilor McEwen. Any council comment? Any public comment? See a nun? All those in favor? Motion passes five zero. Councilor Pelletier, can I read it, can I have you read order number two thirty-nine dash twenty twenty-two?
Sir, sir, Madam Chairman. Order number two thirty-nine dash twenty twenty, providing for maintenance and foundation grant acceptance. It is ordered that the Millenac Town Council accepts the five thousand dollar grant maintenance foundations produced by the reservation department, first of states and others related.
Second.
Motion made by Councilor Pelletier, seconded by Councilor Mador. Any council comment? I do, go ahead, Mr. Manager.
Just a hopefully helpful point of clarification here. This is grant funding that we have already received and spent. This is for documentation related, for audit purposes. The skates have been purchased for our free rentals over the winter at our ice skating rink.
Yeah, thank, thank you for that clarification. I noted when we received the funding, so figured it was for some documentation. Any comment from the public? See a nun? Back to the council. All those in favor? Motion carries five zero. Uh, Councilor Mador, order number two forty, please.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Order number two forty dash twenty twenty-two, providing for approval to carry forward FY two twenty-two unspent budget item. It is ordered that the Millenac Town Council approves the carryforward of seventy-five thousand, five hundred and eighty-five dollars for the following unspent FY twenty-two budget item. Number one, Public Works Roads Paving and Construction Expense, E zero four zero seven dash two zero one one, fifty-seven thousand, two hundred and nine dollars. Number two, Public Works L RAP Local Funds Assistant Program Revenue, R zero four zero seven dash zero nine one three, three thousand, three hundred and seventy-six dollars. And number three, Capital Improvement Expenses, E one, three zero zero dash nine five zero four, fifteen thousand dollars, Fire and Ambulance Department Radio System Upgrade, system order, but delivery and installation are pending. Uh, note, items one and two above all change the FY twenty-three Public Works Road Paving and Construction Budget from three hundred and fifty thousand dollars to four hundred and ten thousand, five hundred and eighty-five dollars, an increase of sixty thousand, five hundred and eighty-five dollars. Second.
Motion made by Councilor Mador, uh, seconded by Councilor McEwen. Any council discussion? Any from the public? See a nun? All those in favor? Motion passes five zero. Councilor McEwen, can I have you read order number two forty-one?
Yes, Madam Chair, order number two forty-one dash twenty twenty-two, providing for approval of local food pantry donation. It is ordered that the Millenac Town Council approve the donation of one hundred dollars the Dead River Hunger, sorry, Dead River Hunger Awareness Campaign for September twenty twenty-two from the Unassigned Fund Balance. Second.
Motion made by Councilor McEwen, seconded by Councilor Mador. Any council comment? Any comment from the public? See a nun? All those in favor? Motion passes five zero. Councilor Prey, can I have you read order number two forty-two, please?
Order number two forty-two dash twenty twenty-two, providing for advertising the town of Millenac and the Katadon Visitors Guide. It is ordered that the Millenac Town Council approve the spending of five hundred and twenty-five dollars for a half-page advertisement in the Katadon Visitors Guide, published by the Katadon Chamber of Commerce. The expenditure will be charged with E zero one one two dash two zero zero one, administrative, administration department advertising expense, which currently has an unspent budget of two thousand, two hundred and nine dollars and seventy-five cents.
Second.
Motion made by Councilor Prey, seconded by Councilor Mador. Council comment? I do have a quick question. As far as the ads is going to be placed, what would the content look like, or is that yet to be determined in something like this?
That's yet to be determined. We will be working with John and Sam and the folks at Design Lab to refresh what we have on file and, and get that submitted. Happy to include that in an upcoming report.
Thank you. Any comment, comment from the public? See a nun? All those in favor? Motion passes five zero. Councilor Pelletier, can I have you read order number two forty-three dash twenty twenty-two?
Sir, order number forty-three dash twenty twenty-two, providing for SRTB grant expenditures approval. Whereas order number one thirty-two dash twenty twenty, cause of funding of SRTB grant expenditures that require council approval for any such expenditures during this period. And whereas this administration seeking approval for Brooklyn-related training and auditory proceeding, which are part of the original SRTB grant application, therefore, it is ordered that the SRTB expenditures of forty-one thousand, nine hundred ninety-eight dollars are for auditory proceeding, Brooklyn-related training and related expenses.
Second.
A motion made by Councilor Pelletier, seconded by Councilor McEwen. Any council comment? Any comment by the public? See a nun? All those in favor? Order number two forty-three passes five zero. Councilor Mador, can I have you read order number two forty-four?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Order number two forty-four dash twenty twenty-two, providing for appointment through the Millenac Town Committee Events Committee. It is ordered the Millenac Town Council approves the appointment of Amber Wheaton to serve on the events committee.
Second.
Motion made by Councilor Mador, seconded by Councilor Prey. Council comment? Any comment from the public? See a nun? All those in favor? Motion passes five zero. We are on to reports and communications. Warrant Committee for October thirteenth, Councilor Prey and Chair Golub, you're, yes, thank you. It might be your, one of your last chances, though yes is a good answer. Any chair committee report? There are no chair committee reports. We have time for two-minute public comment. Come up to the microphone.
Julia Archie, four seventy-three, Rosestic Avenue. I just had a couple of things. They're actually good things. As you guys know, I'm the Secretary of the Red Knights in Millenac. We are going to be having a, our second annual trunk or treat on Halloween, right at the Katadon Appliance. So we're hoping to coincide with the towns. We thought it was a big hit last year, but we wanted to make sure we did it again this year. And second, we are going to be having on Sunday, November twentieth, from ten to two, we're going to have our third annual Christmas for Katadon Kids Toy Drive. That's going to be held at the American Legion. And all monies, gifts, everything is going to go to Toys for Tots. So on that note, also, I've been kind of roped in by Livy Morrow, who is in charge of Toys for Tots in the Lincoln area. She has asked me to help her. And in helping her, she has asked me to be a representative for Millenac. So, um, starting October first, seventy-fifth year for Toys for Tots. And I would like to kick off big in Millenac. Apparently, there haven't been many boxes in a few years at the hospital. So, um, so far I have True Value, Hannaford Irving, Moose Drop Inn, Bragged and Energy. I was talking to Councilor Bragden about it and I didn't know if it needed to go to a vote, but he suggested maybe I could put a box in the town hall. I don't know the protocol of that. If somebody could let me know.
I can speak on that if you would like. There has been, in the past couple of years, no box, but prior years, there has been a box. No vote was needed. It was just placed there and employees weren't able to drop donations, so.
Okay, that would be great. And hopefully, I need to find a place where I can do it. But a lot of people from our area have not been able to get to Lincoln over the past few years, get their gifts. So I'm, I possibly have a place to do it, but it's small. So I'm looking for a place where I can set a home base for three days to distribute toys to the local people. So if anybody knows of anything, feel free to message me.
Who's up?
So you're looking for a storage area once the, um, the toys come back from the Lincoln area, so that then you can just?
To distribute, yeah, there, there are supposed to be, it's like three days, three hours a day. So I just need a place at home, so people can come, pick up their gifts and confidence and kind of confidentiality, because a lot of people
Sure.
don't want it publicly known. And I also have applications too, so if anybody needs applications, they can reach out to me. I'm on Facebook, Julie Archie. Send me a message, I'd be happy to get them out, and don't be proud. If you need it, get it.
Really, I really appreciate um you stepping up and doing that in a big way for that community, and I would encourage you to send some of the information to Amber, to include in the Magic City monthly, that's gonna benefit our community. You probably can get your word out that way.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you so much.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn? All those in favor? Passes five zero. Four to one. We're gonna go home anyway, Charlie.